It is board tradition before we start the meeting to open with a word of prayer. So those that would like to join us, please do so. Ms. Bennett's going to lead us.
Lord's Prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you with grateful hearts tonight. Lord, we are thankful to be celebrating all of these wonderful people that do so many things for us, Lord. We are so privileged to be able to serve this county as a school board and we just benefit from it, Lord. Our kids, they have a great place for our love and be educated and it is the most wonderful blessing. And please continue to remember all of those effects of the western Carolina and all of the states out West. With the flooding and all the other disasters, Lord, those people in our hearts and our prayers. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Words of life. Now for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Y'all can be seated. Okay, well, at this time, we'll call it to order. Can everybody hear us? Can anybody hear us? We need more volume. Very seldom is it. I've been told I couldn't be heard. All right, we're going to start with the approval of the agenda. I believe we may have a mo- You got it? Okay. May have a potential modification of the agenda.
Yes, on the consent agenda, I want to ask that we remove the approval of the regular session minutes on January 21 and approval of the work session minutes February 3 to make some revisions of those and we'll put them back for consent for the next meeting.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor of removing those from the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Opposed? So moved? All right, with that being said, do I have an approval of the amended agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? So carried. Now for the special part of this day because it's always wonderful to see everybody and it's even more wonderful that you come out for the good news. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Rice if you would.
And we are in a different location this evening, so we're going to do things a little bit differently. And we're going to ask the board to go down to the floor as we call off the good news sections and people will come forward and have their picture made in front of the stage and then we will go from there. So board, if you would like to make your way down to the floor, we'll begin with Dr. Taylor in just a minute.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to announce the Stokes County Schools Employee of the Month for the month of February. I have the privilege of announcing that Mr. Raphael Santana has been selected as the Stokes County Schools Employee of the Month for February 2025. Mr. Santana has been employed by Stokes County Schools since March of 2022. He came to Stokes County Schools with over seventeen years of experience in the custodial and groundskeeping field when he worked at Novant Health. The following comments provided by his colleagues reflect his impressive commitment. Raphael is truly phenomenal at everything he does. He keeps an old building looking new and has really brought the pride of the school back aesthetically. He is one of the hardest working people we've ever met. He deserves so much recognition for the time and effort he spends in his work. One other colleague stated, "Mr. Santana's exceptional dedication, tireless work ethic, and consistent attention to detail has transformed one of the county's oldest schools into one of the best maintained." He has a positive attitude and is constantly willing to go above and beyond in his commitment to keeping the school efficient and well-supplied, which makes him truly outstanding employee. We are very grateful for Mr. Santana's hard work, his commitment, and dedication to London Elementary and Stokes County Schools. The Stokes County Schools Employee of the Month for February 2025, Mr. Raphael Santana.
Our next piece of good news goes to our district high school Christmas card winner, Rachel Cottle, 11th grade student at West Stokes High School. And Dr. Jones says she is not here, so I'm going to hand this to him so that he can pass that along to her.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to take a moment to recognize two individuals, one current student and one former student who have recently received a distinguished Eagle Scout Award. And a part of that award, they took part in projects here in our community, so I want to highlight those individuals at this time. The first recipient, keep in mind that both of these Eagle Scouts are from Boy Scout Troop 408. And the first one I'd like to recognize is Matthew Dotson, who's a senior at the Stokes Early College High School. If you'll come on down. As part of Matthew's Eagle Scout project, he chose to landscape around the front entrance sign at the Stokes Early College High School and Forsyth Tech Stokes County Campus. With the support of local businesses including Hitchcock Builder Supply, Tuttle Hardware, and Mitchell's Nursery, as well as donations from family and friends, Matthew was able to bring a revitalized curb appeal to the main entrance sign off of Dodge Town Road. We thank Matthew for his leadership and initiative as he completed this project and we congratulate him on earning his Eagle Scout designation. The next individual I would like to recognize is a 2024 graduate of South Stokes High School, Mr. Taylor Thornton, if you'll come on down. As part of completing his Eagle Scout project, Taylor chose to build a little free library in the town of Pine Hall. His goal through this project is to bring the community closer together by providing an opportunity to share books and the love of reading with one another. We appreciate Taylor's leadership in promoting a sense of community by expanding book access and promoting literacy through his Eagle Scout project. We congratulate him on earning his Eagle Scout designation. Board, at this time, we will transition to the graduation and growth award certificates for the 2023-24 school year. The North Carolina Department of Public Instruction presents awards annually for graduation and growth awards earned by the hard work of students and educators. We recognize those who have achieved and exceeded expected academic growth under North Carolina's accountability system. In addition to earning a certificate, schools may obtain a website badge graphic that can be used on the school's website or on printed materials to showcase their accomplishments. Former State Superintendent Catherine Truitt requested that we share her appreciation and congratulations to the students and educators for their impressive work. At this time, I would like to call up Mr. Durham and staff from the Stokes Early College for their achievement of a 100% graduation rate. At this time, I would like to call up administrators and other representatives from the following schools for achieving the North Carolina Academic Growth Award for the 2023-24 school year. Our first school is Germanton Elementary School. Great. Our next- Our next school is King Elementary School, Mr. Bryan, his staff. Mr. Pritchett and representatives from London Elementary School. Let's call forward Mr. Richardson and representatives from Mount Olive Elementary School. This time, I'll call the other Mr. Richardson and his staff from Nancy Reynolds Elementary School. Our next school we'll recognize will be Poplar Springs Elementary School. The next school we'll recognize for meeting academic growth will be Sandy Ridge Elementary School. At this time, I'd like to recognize the staff from Walnut Cove Elementary School. In board, I do want to congratulate Ms. Cox and her staff also at Lawsonville Elementary last year for meeting expected growth as well. At this time, I'd like to recognize staff and representatives from the schools who exceeded academic growth for the 2023-24 school year. The first school was Chestnut Grove Middle School. The next school we'd like to recognize is Panic Grove Middle School. Pinnacle Elementary School. Moving to our high schools, our next school of recognition is South Stokes High School. Our next recognition is West Stokes High School. This time, I'd like to recognize the Stokes Early College High School. And in board, I also want to recognize the staff from Pine Hall Elementary School for also exceeding growth last school year. The work done by our administrators and teachers doesn't happen just by chance. There's a lot of intentional work and hard work by our administrators and teachers alike to not only meet growth but to exceed growth. So congratulations again to all those who had a part in that at your schools. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. McGee.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I will try to talk loud, which is never been a complaint. So we'll see what we can do. We're going to start, we're going to do this one just a little bit different. We will start with the elementary teachers and all of those will come up and have their, together as a group, and have their picture made. Then we'll go middle school and then high school. Okay? All right, here we go. Courtney Parrish, 3rd grade reading, state and local, King Elementary. Casey Van Winkle, 3rd grade reading, state and local, London Elementary. Ashley Jones, 3rd grade reading, local, Mount Olive Elementary. Ashley Atkins, 3rd grade reading, local, Mount Olive Elementary. Missy Swales, 3rd grade reading, local, Mount Olive Elementary. Emily Whitaker, 3rd grade reading, state and local, Pinnacle Elementary. Lindsay Drum, 4th grade reading, state and local, King Elementary. Carrie Davis, 4th grade math, local, Pinnacle Elementary. Tabby Petrie, 4th grade reading, state and local, 4th grade math, state and local, Poplar Springs Elementary. Leah Mabe, 4th grade math, state and local, Poplar Springs. Jessica Daniels, 4th grade math, state and local, Poplar Springs Elementary. Casey Livengood, 4th grade reading, state and local, Sandy Ridge Elementary. Maria Wood, 4th grade reading, state and local, Sandy Ridge Elementary. Robin Wilson, 4th grade reading, state and local, Walnut Cove Elementary. Allison Brown, 4th grade math, state, Walnut Cove Elementary. Haley Cox, 5th grade reading, local, Germanton Elementary. Janet Fowler, 5th grade math, state and local, King Elementary. Sarah Cornett, 5th grade math, state and local, London Elementary. Misty Leffwich, 5th grade math, state, Pinnacle Elementary. Jay Duncan, 5th grade reading, state and local, Poplar Springs Elementary. Kalen Sprague, 5th grade math, state and local, Poplar Springs Elementary. Allison Scott, 5th grade reading, state and local, 5th grade math, state and local, Walnut Cove Elementary. Laura Williams, 5th grade reading, state and local, Walnut Cove Elementary. And that concludes the elementary portion. Elementary teachers, if y'all will join the board and... Congratulations, elementary teachers. Now for our middle school recognitions. Anna Hall, 6th grade math, state and local, Chestnut Grove Middle School. Kimberly Williams, 6th grade math, local, Pine Grove Middle School. Karen Joyce, 7th grade math, state and local, Chestnut Grove Middle School. Patricia Combs, 8th grade math, state and local, Chestnut Grove Middle School. And Samantha Sarat, 8th grade math, state and local, Chestnut Grove Middle School. This concludes our middle school awards. Middle school teachers, if y'all will take a step in front of the board. Okay, now we are going to do high school AP. Marsh Dunn, AP bonus environmental science, South Stokes High School. Richard Smith, AP bonus in US history, South Stokes High School. Heather Fowler, AP bonus in English literature, West Stokes High School. Ashley Jessup, AP bonus in US history, West Stokes High School. Christine Long, AP bonus in English literature, West Stokes High School. Megan Marshall-Wicker, AP bonus in Spanish language, West Stokes High School. This concludes our AP bonuses, so if you guys will take a step in front of the board. Our last section will be our CTE bonuses, so we will begin with Mr. Wayne Fulp, Technology Engineering and Industrial Design, Norstokes High School. Carmen Heath, Family and Consumer Science, Norstokes High School. Tracy Moorefield, Health Science, Norstokes High School. Donald Spencer, Auto Technology, Norstokes High School. Leah Barcy, Family and Consumer Science, South Stokes High School. Eric Mercer, Construction Technology, South Stokes High School. Kevin Smith, Auto Technology, South Stokes High School. Colton Belk, Carpentry and Electrical, West Stokes High School. Marcia Childress, Foods and Nutrition, West Stokes High School. Michael Grayson, Project Lead the Way, West Stokes High School. Jeffrey Robertson, Carpentry, West Stokes High School. And that concludes our CTE awards. Congratulations to all of our schools and teachers.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comments. Now unfortunately, the sign-up sheet was misplaced prior to the meeting. If there's anybody that would like to speak during public comments, please feel free to come up, sign up, and we'll give you three minutes to let us know your thoughts. Going once, going twice, and we're gone. All right, moving on to consent agenda, which is the approval of the regular session minutes for December 16th, 2024, and the approval of policy 2310, public participation in board meetings. At this time, I'll take...
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bennett. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? So carried. Superintendent's report. Dr. Rice, tell us what great things we've got going on in Stokes County.
Well, actually, tonight, we're gonna move a little bit further than Stokes County. The two items I'd like to share tonight is, first of all, I had the privilege of attending the State Board of Education meeting a few weeks ago, and I wanted to share the legislative priorities with our board that the State Board of Education and state superintendent have shared. First of all, they wanted to share the legislative deadlines as we advocate for our schools to know when these things occur. The Senate bill drafting deadline is February 27th. The House bill drafting deadline is March 6th. The Senate bill filing deadline is March 25th. The April 3rd House bill filing deadline is April 3rd, and crossover this year is May 8th. So I wanted to share those deadlines with you as you talk with our representatives. Again, our local representatives are Kyle Hall and then Dana Cottle-Jones in the Senate. So the six pillars that the State Board has adopted this year are to prepare each student for their next phase of life, to invest in public schools by fully funding public education, to revere public school educators, to enhance parent and community support, to ensure safe and secure learning environments, and to celebrate the good in public school. Their recommended legislative priorities, number one is to support students in western North Carolina, recovery from the impacts of Hurricane Helene, including providing an additional $100 million to address school facility needs in impacted districts. The second one is to invest in raising teacher and educator pay so that North Carolina has the highest teacher salaries in the southeast and to restore master's pay for all educators. The next one is to reform the principal pay plan, and then next is to help address the nearly $13 billion in school construction needs across the state. It's glad to see that that is, I'm glad to see that that is a state priority to look at from the legislative level, again, as we know that we have aging facilities and needs there as well. Their non-budget legislative request are school calendar flexibility, and I shared with you the other day that Kyle Hall, amongst others, has proposed a bill for Stokes County schools to have calendar flexibility, but they're looking for this on a statewide basis as well. Public school units dollar allotment reversion to be used to purchase technology, and that is when there are unused accounts at the end of the year to help fund technology needs in districts. Portfolio requirements for individuals seeking principal licensure, DPI flexibility for placement for early literacy specialist. As you may remember, we have an early literacy specialist. Each of the 115 counties, LEAs, have an early literacy specialist. Well, when you look at Terrell County that has less than 1,000 students, and then a Charlotte Mecklenburg that has way more than 1,000 students, and they each get one, they were looking to have flexibility in how they move those around. They wanted to eliminate the Praxis Core requirements for admissions into an EPP, which is an educator preparation program, and ADM hold harmless for Helene-impacted school districts, and to eliminate the DPI State Board of Education School and District Accreditation Program. Other non-budget items are to revise the provisions for the Community Eligibility Provision Meal Program Incentive Program, that is to try to offer more free and reduced lunch, potentially statewide for all levels, to study how to eliminate or consolidate required DPI and State Board of Education legislative reports, to sunset the textbook commission, and to allow charter schools to establish an account with the state treasurer to require them to use those accounts for cash management and funds administered by DPI. So those are the legislative priorities. Some have financial impact and some are non-budget items. Are there any questions about any of those items? All right, moving on...
Sorry, excuse me. Could you expand upon the eliminate DPI and the State School Board School and District Accreditation?
Yes. For years, school districts contracted with outside agencies for school accreditation, and that is a real-time cumbersome process, and it's extremely expensive. There also is not a lot of benefit from being accredited. DPI had offered an accreditation process, and Stokes County Schools has used that with our high schools at the last accreditation cycle, which is much cheaper and less, much less time-consuming, and it basically, you know, when they look at our reports and stuff and see like what we recognize tonight, our high growth and growth, that we are doing what we're supposed to do, that we're accredited. Knowing that there's really not a need for that, that is not a barrier for kids to go to college, that's not really a purpose for that, they were looking to drop that from their responsibilities because a lot of school districts have said it's not a need anymore because not being accredited has no harm to our students.
Thank you.
The next topic I wanted to cover briefly, and when these materials are on the website, I would encourage people to go to the hyperlinks for this. You may have heard on the news about the Power School cybersecurity incident, and this has been on the news, and I have been relatively quiet about this because information changes rapidly, and it was not a Stokes County Schools event, if you will. Power School is a worldwide company. They do the data for nearly every state, if not every state, other countries, and everyone in the state of North Carolina. One of their employees had their data breached, and Power School has worked through that. I've included links on the statements from Power School, also the information from the State School Board, the Board of Education meeting, a video, an Attorney General statement. I've included all of those things. Those are all on our website. We have a folder that you can go to for the Power School cybersecurity incident, and we are directing people to the people who are responsible for this. So you will see statements from DPI, from Power School, and our state's Attorney General for recommendations. So we are sharing that information. We've sent out some phone calls. We made some social media posts. It is all on our website, but I wanted to take tonight's meeting to highlight that for some people that may watch this meeting that didn't go through one of those other channels, to let them know where that is housed and where further information can be found. Power School is supposed to be reaching out to individuals who had had their data breached, whether that's for a parent of one of our students or an employee, and they are reaching out to those people individually. out to those people individually to work through the issues, but also everyone would be, have access to credit monitoring, and again, all of that information is in those statements, and it is on our website for this problem. Are there any questions about that? All right, hearing none. I would just like to echo, while most everybody, if not everybody, has left tonight, we are very proud of those that received those bonuses and the top 25%. As you noticed, I've set a goal for our school district to be a top 25% school district in each of our schools, and to have those people recognized by the state that, and I found it interesting in several categories, we had people receive top 25% in the state, but were not able to get it in our district. That mean, it was easier to be a top 25 person in the state than it was to be in Stokes County Schools, because we have a lot of quality educators, and we're very proud of them tonight. And that concludes my report.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Rice. Moving on to discussion agenda, discussion of the budget, back to Dr. Rice.
Yes, sir. I wanted to give another opportunity. We spoke back during January for the board to give some budget priorities, and I wanted to open up for another opportunity for that. You certainly, again, can email or call if you would like to list some budget priorities, but I wanted to give another opportunity this evening if anybody would like to share publicly any budget priorities that you have for this year.
Ms. Bennett, anything come to mind?
No.
Ms. Knight?
I mean, I know there are lots of needs. I would love, you know, I just need to whittle some of them down and maybe prioritize a little further and send Dr. Rice an email, but thank you for asking.
Mr. Robertson?
No, not really. I know at the last, in last year, we spoke about maintaining our fund balance, and I know we're coming up on a budget meeting, so I would like some direction from the board if we want to try to maintain, I think, the last year we agreed not to let that fund balance below about $1,005, which for the amount of our budget is still a very small fund balance, but is that still the wishes of the board? I agree that I think we should maintain at least $1,005 in that fund balance, but I didn't know if anybody's opinion about that had changed or not.
For everybody out there, Dr. Rice, what is our total budget?
Our total budget, Ms. Moore, is about 70, $79, $80 million. So yes, 1.5 million is not a lot when you compare $80 million.
Roughly 2% of our budget.
Yes, sir.
And I think the county, I think county-wise, county's budget is probably not as much as ours right now, I don't think, or maybe pretty close, and they're supposed to maintain about a 30% fund balance.
I believe that's around what they have now.
Yeah, so I think their minimum is 10, about 10%, probably minimum, or the state steps in, they start having problems. So for us to have a 1% or 2% fund balance is very small, and we've had it higher than that. Our fund balance has been above that, but last year we had to pull some of that money from the fund balance in order to balance our budget, because our funds were cut from the county. So we decided we didn't want to do that, we can't do that on a yearly basis, so which means we get into our budget this year, we're probably gonna, you know, we're probably gonna run into the effects of that and have to make some tough decisions on what we need to do. So I just wanted to make sure the board understands that. We talked about it last year, and we're still on the same page with that this year.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Duncan?
Yeah, I would like to think some more, and as far as what Mr. Robertson said, I agree with the 1.5, but, you know, my list of wants or whatnot may be impacted based on county funding and what we may have to do to balance budgets. So I'd be interested to see what the committee comes back with first.
Okay, I mean, the only thing I've got is I would like to see us at 1 and 1/2 or 1.5 on a fund balance, but I'd hate to think that we lose the momentum we saw tonight and all the good things, because we just didn't have enough money to support the growth that we're achieving. All right, with that being said, we'll move on to discussion of the budget amendments.
Excuse me, Ms. Moore, is that microphone on? Okay, all right.
Can we give her a little more juice?
Can you not hear me?
Now we can.
Now we can.
Okay, I'm sorry. Current expense fund two amendment number one is increasing our current expense fund two by $4,565.87, and that's due to some rental of the facilities, some miscellaneous revenue that we've received. You have a federal amendment, budget number one. This is increasing our federal funds by $192,898.58. The main reason for this is our EC department, they make special requests for special needs children, and that's not approved during the school year, so when we actually do our budget resolution, those monies have not been approved. So basically, the 186, 115 is a result of special revenue after the application has been applied, once you've approved your budget resolution. And then you have two PRCs with a slight decrease, and that's just when the state has adjusted from the planning allotment to our actual allotment. Capital outlay, we're increasing the budget by $87,843.68. The main increase here is due to the yellow bus school finance purchase. We have to wait for the state to send that information out during the year, and we've received an additional allotment there. And then we had some disposal of assets, and we had an insurance settlement where we had one of our vehicles in an accident. So that's the $87,843.68 for capital outlay. Current expense fund eight, increasing the budget by $24,761.34. This is where we received some E-rate money for the hotspots, and the contribution and donation, as you know, we've received from Duke Energy of $17,000. Do you have any questions?
Ms. Bennett? Ms. Knight?
I know we had another round of budget amendments, and those were on consent last meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
And this is, okay, yeah.
And if it, with board approval, if you will move these to action, I know we've, I was out, and then also we had bad weather was part of it, so if that's possible, it will help us, because we'll have more amendments coming after these.
Okay. Before we move it, do you have any questions?
Yeah, Ms. Moore.
Yes, sir.
On the federal fund budget amendment number one.
Yes, sir.
The 182, 898.58 we received, and it shows here total appropriation in current amended budget, $6,152.8020.
Right.
Is that the total federal funds that we received this year?
Yes, sir. And you see a major decrease here because of the extra funding no longer being available from what you had from previous years.
The $6,150 is more in line with what we typically would receive, right?
Yes, sir. It is, yes, sir.
Okay. That's all.
Mr. Duncan?
No, I'll make a motion to move to action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? All right, so moved. That will become-
I have one more question, if you don't mind for Ms. Moore.
Ms. Moore?
But would you say this is the bulk of federal funds, or there's other federal, you know, funds that go along with this?
This amendment includes all federal funding that we've received at this time.
But projections for the year are a larger number, or is this the total federal for the year? I just want to be sure I was clear on that.
Okay, on your federal budget, this is all we're anticipating at this time unless the state comes through with some additional funding.
Right, right. And if you don't mind, I would just be curious of like further breakdowns, and I think it's probably here in some of these pages. You know, I know there's been kind of mention of rolling back, you know, federal funding and federal dollars from the national level, and I understand that as far as most folks would probably agree, the federal government, you know, doesn't necessarily need to be involved in day-to-day educational-type decisions and policies, and, you know, may not always know what is best for sure for students, and just kind of looking for like specific individual programs that go along with that.
Okay, when you approved the budget resolution, that did include a breakdown of all the different PRCs, the funding that we get for each program. At this time, I just attended a conference last week, no information. We had federal people speaking at that meeting, but we were not given any indication. They're just in limbo like we are, not knowing what might happen as far as federal funding.
So if I, I would just email you if I had any further questions about a specific PRC, but I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, and I'll be glad to answer and help you.
Thank you.
Okay, we had a motion and a second, and we moved it, so.
We will, we did move it.
Yeah, we moved it. You asked your questions, so with that, we'll move on to the discussion of Mount Olive Partition Bid. Mr. Roberts?
Good evening, board. You should have a copy of the Mount Olive Gym Cafeteria Partition Project bid tabulation in your packet. On your copy, it's only going to show two bids. It shows a no bid for Maxon and Associates, but they sent that in late on Friday, so I do have that bid now as well. That bid was $68,350. As you can see, tri-state folding partitions was a low bid at $59,783.20. Do you guys have any questions for me about this?
Ms. Bennett, do you have any questions?
I don't think so.
Ms. Knight, any questions?
No, this is as far as long-time standing need on our list of many needs and requests for the year, and appearing to be the lowest bidder to fill the job, I'm okay with it.
This is for the partition we noted when we were at, when we did the facility store.
Right.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Robertson?
The only question, I guess, is this partition that we're going to install for this bid, is it similar to what was already there?
We started this-
Is it new and improved?
It's new and improved. We started this project out going back towards a more of a curtain-type deal like they had in place, but after the principal and I spoke about it a few times, we decided to check into the flat panel side, and after a little tweaking, I think we've got that flat panel where we can afford it.
What do we have budgeted for this?
It was $60,000, I think, budgeted for this.
Okay, cutting it a little close, aren't you?
We are cutting it very close, yes, sir.
That's all you have?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan, do you have any questions?
As far as installation, I mean, you can go ahead and do that. As soon as we get approval, or how's that?
Once we get approval, the company that bid this will come in and do a walkthrough, check to get the exact measurements. They'll have it made then. It's about a seven-week lead time to have it made, custom-made for that size. Then they return and do the installation. Turnkey.
You need us to move to action?
Yes, sir, if you could, that would be great.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to move it to action.
I'm make a motion to move this item to action.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, second by Mr. Robertson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. That'll be action, item C. Mount Olive.
Thank you.
Okay, and then item D is discussion of committee appointments. As I did last meeting, we put Mr. Robertson on the budget meeting. Today, I'd like to assign Mr. Duncan to the CTE. Ms. Knight, policy seems to be a passion of yours, I'm going to say, and you've done your time on safety and security for a while, so.
Well, and I kind of wonder if the wording, are we lumping health? I kind of lean a little more towards health versus safety, security. I don't know with-
Well, I'm just going by what's on the policy.
Normally, safety and security includes the School Health Advisory Council, or SHAC. That's kind of all been lumped into one of safety, security, and including in that safety is health.
Okay. Thanks.
So you will be on policy, and Ms. Bennett, that will give you safety and security. But Ms. Knight, you have the seniority. If you would rather stay on safety and security, I will be more than happy for that. It's at your discretion.
No, I'm, I mean, I'm okay with some variety, and not one staying in one spot for too long. I'm fine with that.
All right, great. So with that being said, we'll-
Sorry. I do have interest, I know it was mentioned with the CTE advisory and whatnot, if we would like to attend maybe that upcoming possible meeting in regards to CTE possibilities, Monday, the 24th, so that that could be advertised.
Well, I've instructed Dr. Rice to ahead and advertise it so that we're all clean and safe.
Gotcha.
All right, moving on to action then. Approval of the personnel and coaching. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve personnel and coaching?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Action item B, budget amendments, approval. Do I have a motion to approve budget amendments?
Make a motion to approve budget amendments as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then action item C was the Mount Olive Partition. For that motion to be legal, Mr. Johnson, should it not state who we are awarding it to and dollar value?
That is correct.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for somebody that wants to make it, if so.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. We approve the Mount Olive Elementary Gym and Cafeteria Partition Project to tri-state folding partitions in the amount of $59,783.20.
Okay, I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Duncan. Thank you, sir. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried. Information and announcements, that is, Mr. or Dr. Jones, D2.
Thank you, Chairman Rogers. Board, I want to take a second to thank our tech team and those who had a part in setting up this venue today for our meeting, so I appreciate all their help and hard work in getting that set up. I do want to remind those in attendance and watching online that our next meeting will be held March 3. That is a four o'clock meeting back in our regular meeting place, the administrative office. I also want to inform the board that the spelling bee was rescheduled from last week to this week, but with the anticipated weather, we bumped it up a day to tomorrow. So our spelling bee will be held tomorrow morning at 9:00 here at Nancy Reynolds. And then you have information regarding Battle of the Books in your packet, as well as your calendars, field trips, and fundraising requests. That's all I have, Chairman Rogers.
All right.
And one quick question, kind of along these lines. If there is bad weather, what's the next go-to? I know it falls on our calendar probably here, but-
Well, it does, but I like to wait to see how many days we end up missing, if we miss any, to try to make it work and make sense. With that being said, I know that a lot of people have plans for spring break, and we are trying to avoid spring break, if at all possible. I will say that with this system, every weather update we get from the National Weather Service, they have changed it, and they have said that confidence is high, that something will happen, but every time we have another briefing, they change what's going to happen. And so it is a mixed bag. There may be a close for staff and students, so it may swap a workday into spring break, but we can certainly work with staff with that if that were to happen, and our students, again, will try our best to protect spring break as long as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, then, the other thing I want to note was the March 24 board meeting, that is not a third Monday of the month, that is a fourth Monday of the month. So if we plug it in our calendars if we're not aware, that's how it's followed.
And that is due to spring break, and the anticipation that we are going to keep spring break, and so we're not going to ask people to come that evening for board spotlights or any of that.
Okay, board, pending no further discussion, I will entertain a motion to adjourn and leave this fine palace.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are officially adjourned, and y'all have a safe trip- We are officially adjourned, and y'all have a safe trip home. Be careful out there.
Thank you.